Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hoyoke Middle School Committee meeting. It is...
What?
Oh, it's on. 6:02 PM on the 22nd of January. We can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, just a little housekeeping before we get started here. I have to read the memo from the Governor. "March 29, 2023, Governor Haley signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which amongst other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, the extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at any meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31, 2023 to March 31, 2025." Notice is hereby given the Chapter 28 of all Acts of 2019, Sections 17, 20, Massachusetts General Laws. Regular meeting of the High School Committee will be held today. All right, we will do a roll call, please.
Give me one second, please. I'll do it. I just gotta pull it up.
While you're doing that, I'll just remind everybody that I'm informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of this meeting. The meeting is being livestreamed and run on the city's community TV channel.
Okay, so Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Ms. Brunel.
Here.
Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Mr. Romero.
Present.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Dr. Rivera-Cologne.
Present.
Dr. Gloria Caraballo-Caballero. Mr. Willihan.
Here.
Mr. Colomore.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
All right, thank you. Moving right along, we will begin with our student showcase, and we have our Sullivan School Cheer Team here tonight. So whoever's gonna start off the conversation, Mr. Vitri. Thank you for joining us.
Uh, strange. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. Um, we were here, uh, this is the Hoyoke Middle School cheer team last year, and, uh, we came and one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we're carrying, that in our Sullivan Cheer Team here today, they're here because they, uh, for many reasons, most importantly, they, uh, they started practicing the first, the first team that has formed. They were prepared for this year, um, which is, and they also had, they have, uh, an important announcement. So I'll pass it over to, to our coaches today.
Hello, everyone. So like you said, I'm Yoshika Herena, and this is Kamara Rolon, and we are the coaches, um, for the Sullivan Middle School. So, um, we're super excited that we were able to do the team, and we got a lot of support, um, from Soto. So we were able to get the girls' uniforms. Um, we did fundraisers, and we got bows and jackets and all the good stuff. Um, the girls are here with just like their warm-up outfits, but one of the girls came in her complete uniform, so you guys could see what it looks like. Um, and just a little bit really quick, just like last year, um, they're so, you know, they're, they're excited about having everything, but we don't have really anywhere to go to show how cute they are and what they can do. Um, I've tried my best. We got them into the Hoyoke Talent Show. Um, they were able to do the Puerto Rican Parade this year. They're gonna do the St. Patrick's Parade. Um, and then we have an event coming up that we wanted to invite you all to. We will be having the girls perform at Mass. So my captain's gonna, um, give you guys flyer, so hopefully, um, we'll see some support. They're not gonna be on the ice this year, but they are gonna be on the concourse, and it'll be right after the, um, first intermission, so they'll be performing. And then next year, hopefully, we'll be able to get more. But yeah, we're hoping that in the future, the girls are able to perform at basketball games. That's our biggest, biggest thing. Like, they wish they could do that. If you ask them if there's anything, it's like they wanna be able to be like a normal cheerleader and go to basketball games, or, and we just don't have that. And I don't understand still to this day why. Like, I do all this, or we do all this, and we take a lot of our personal and private time for this, and just to do maybe four little events, it's like, you know. So I keep trying, and I'm hoping that someone can convince the Boys and Girls Club one day to let the middle school cheerleaders perform. I don't understand why not, but maybe you guys can help me out with that. So I wanted to take advantage and put it out there.
There you go.
That's easy. That's an easy one.
That's, I don't understand. That's like our biggest thing, but I wanna show you a little bit. The girls wanna show you, um, what they've been practicing. They have a really nice stand. You guys come out, you'll be able to see that. Um, so with, for you guys, they...
They can go that way. That's fine. Yeah. That way the parents can see it from that point. Oh, Mike is taking photos. Wonderful.
Hey, hey, ready, go! Hey, hey! Hey, Stallions! Go green, go white! Hey, Stallions, let's fight! Go green, go white! Hey, Stallions, let's fight! Ready, release! Y E L L, ready, go! Y E L L, Y E L L, everybody yell, come on! Woo! Pump it up! Woo! Y E L L, Y E L L, everybody yell, come on! Woo! Pump it up! Woo! Ready, release! Green and white, ready, go! Two, four, six, eight, who do you appreciate, green and white? Two, four, six, eight, who is gonna dominate, green and white?
Bravo! I think we should have that before all our school board meetings.
I know!
Pumped!
That was great. Yeah, uh, Mr. Soto, by all means.
Yeah, if, if any brave soul will answer this question for me. So I just wanna understand how, um, has being a part of the club, um, has it, especially in a, in a year when you guys have moved to a new school, has it helped you in terms of confidence or in terms of feeling a sense of belonging in the school or mentorship or anything like that? Uh, how has this club helped you as a student?
Lee?
I am so excited, girls. I wanted to join you.
I know. Watch out.
We're gonna work on trying to get you guys some more work, okay? Thank you so much. Made me think I was in school again. Wow.
Thank you, guys, for coming in. That was great. Uh, one of the other things I thought of too is maybe like some partnerships with the high school cheer team. You know, senior night for the boys' basketball is coming up. Maybe they could even, you know, even if they can't cheer with them, like Y E L L, come on, everybody knows it's a Hoyoke High cheer. So like, you know, they could be there helping to support on senior night or something. There should be some, you know, and then it's great to have some youth that'll be rising up into the cheerleading at the high school. So maybe making some connections with the high school coach. If you need contact information, we can help you with that.
Yeah!
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Competition season is the basketball season, so. Awesome. Well, thanks for coming in. We appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Bravo. Thank you.
Had a little one come in a little late.
And just so that folks know, that's, that's my daughter right there. She's part of the squad.
Oh, where's a uniform? You were gonna show us a full uniform. Woo! That's all right, Mom. You gotta make sure she looks good.
Nice.
Very nice. Hi, Janice. She's like, I'm done. Very nice. You are definitely. She's like, oh, boy.
I love it. I can't believe you guys...
Hopefully, it ain't like 10 degrees.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's awesome.
It's great. Oh, no, thank you all so much.
Bravo.
All right, moving right along. Uh, do we have anybody sign, uh, we don't have a sign out sheet. Do we have anybody for public comment? We do, right? Latasha? Okay. You can come on up to the microphone at the desk, hon. You got it? So just remember to state your name, name and address, hon. Thanks.
My name is Latasha Hinton. I live on 37 Clinton Avenue.
Yes. Microphone a little closer to you.
Uh, my name's Latasha Hinton. I live on 37 Clinton Avenue. This is my daughter, Devia, who's also a Sullivan cheerleader. Um, she's the one that I came to you all about a couple of months ago. That particular incident was not actually resolved. We got the footage off the bus. There was no cameras in the part of the bus where it happened. Since then, I've gotten a list of things that are supposed to be done to prevent this in the future, and I've been following up with other members of Hoyoke Public Schools, but I've gotten to the point now where it's almost weekly occurrence, and it's in school. My daughter gets off the bus at least once a week saying she doesn't wanna go back anymore. And I know people are doing things to help, but my biggest concern, I've had the same, I've had issues like this in the past at Metcalf and this year at Ian White. And I will say that it has staffing there with how quickly it's dealt with, um, in the past and at Ian White. Um, 24 to 48 hours, it's all. People are being dragged out. I had to go to the point of asking the school to not only notify the child said it or did it, but to notify me because I think that I have a right as a mother to be prepared for what my daughter is coming home with instead of her just getting off the bus, like, the day before Christmas break. She got off the bus, was very upset, didn't say hi or anything, just, I never wanna go back. And she told me what happened. I brought her in the house, drove back up to the school to catch the principal before left for the week. I, I don't really know what else to do. The change is taking forever, but she shouldn't have to go through this. She hates school now. She's only in sixth grade. She's a dual language student, so it's not like I have very many options for her to go. I just, I'm tired of feeling like somebody's listening but not hearing. That's kinda where we are right now.
Thank you for coming in. All right, moving right along, communications and reports. We're gonna move into student reports. I do see our, I don't see our Hoyoke High North representative with us this evening, but I see Evan, who is our dean representative. So take it away, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, um, our first update is midterms. Midterm exams began on January 4th and will be ending tomorrow, January 23rd, uh, with our snow, with our snow day last week. It was delayed a, um, about a week for our ending midterms. Next, it is that time of year where eighth graders will be touring our building. Uh, the eighth graders will be led by our dean ambassadors. Our first group is Metcalf this week. Next, signups for SEAL by literacy are still going on. Currently, dean has 116 juniors and seniors who qualify to take the SEAL by literacy. 25 students have already signed up. We will be offering Spanish tutoring sessions after school with Ms. Gaston. Uh, she was, yeah, she was part of the first graduating class to take the SEAL and pass it. And next, once again, Dean Tech, the Dean Tech BBQ and Car Show is back. Mr. Vera is leading the students and student ambassadors. This year, we will, this year, there will be food trucks, vendors, and activities for all to enjoy. If you would like to support, please reach out to Mr. Vera, uh, mvera@hpsoyoke MA.us. And next, this week, the counseling department is bringing awareness about teen mental health. That is a big, uh, that is a big thing that I personally am an advocate for. And the counseling team does activities both, during both lunches that involves sleep hygiene, community of affirmations, excuse me, and social media. And finally, February 1st begins CTE Appreciation Month, and that is all for my updates.
Thank you. Are there gonna be events for CTE Appreciation Month, do you know?
Um, there is nothing on my notes that say that. Uh, I can get back to you with that. I will talk to my CTE director tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, moving into vice chair reports. Um, I'll entertain a motion for a vote to receive the communications from Superintendent Receiver Anthony Soto to Commissioner Riley, uh, recommending that the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education begin, begin the transition to exit receivership in a careful and highly planned manner. It's just a vote to receive the communication. I heard, uh, Ms. LaFave on the motion, and Ms. Tensley-Williams on the second. Being that we have nobody on Zoom, we do not need a roll call, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion? Sorry, discussion comes first. I'll make sure I do that next time. Uh, so carries. First meeting. All right. Moving on, I'll entertain another motion to vote to receive the communication from Commissioner Riley to Mayor Garcia acknowledging receipt of the school committee's petition to end receivership and receipt of the superintendent receiver Anthony Soto's letter and recommendation that we exit receivership, uh, to begin the transition. So again, it's just a vote, uh, to receive the letter from the commissioner. Um, that letter also mentioned that we would be hearing from him on February 4th. Sorry, February 2nd. Yes, that's a, that's a weekday. Sorry. So I'll entertain a motion to receive that letter?
I'm gonna make the motion.
So move.
Jay on the motion. A second? Thank you, Gustavo. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thanks. Is there any plan, um, to follow up on that request? You know, what we're gonna do? Do we have to present a plan to the receiver as to this is what's going to happen after, I mean, to observe that transition?
Uh, no. So what's gonna happen is when the letter comes out on February 2nd, uh, we'll then meet with and decide based on what he says to us, how best we're gonna move forward. And that's, the next thing we'll talk about is the school committee retreat that I have planned to basically do just that. Thanks. Yep. Um, so that was Mr. Willihan on the motion, and that was, uh, Gustavo on the second. Sorry, I couldn't read my own writing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Moving right along. Uh, so following up with that, so I have a school committee retreat planned for February 4th. It's gonna be from 9 to 12. It's gonna be at Hoyoke High North Campus. We're gonna use their media room. And I'll have coffee and breakfast pastries for us. Um, and the main goal of that will be to digest what we receive on the 2nd and strategize our year ahead. February 4th. It's a Sunday. Yes. Yeah. Okay, great. Moving right along, we're in Superintendent Receiver Reports, and Mr. Soto with the panorama survey.
Yeah, so in your, uh, packet, what I wanna do is, just give me one second. I gotta share this screen. Um, I'm gonna share. So in, in your packet, um, we, we, um, we, I provided you with a letter that just captures the, the panorama survey and some of the, like, real high-level takeaways that, that, that we had as a leadership team, um, and some implications. So I just wanted to, uh, briefly go through this presentation. I wanna say three weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, maybe more like three weeks ago, I had sent an email to all members giving them access to the panorama data and then, um, and then providing you with some brief instructions on how to look at it so that you can go in in detail. You could look up each school. You could look up, uh, you know, any, any trends that you might wanna be, uh, look at. One of the things that, you know, some updates that I wanted to name before we get into some of the data is, uh, that this is obviously the first year of rezoning. Uh, we did take an opportunity to take a look at, you know, we, we've been at panorama for about eight years now. So, uh, this was a, a real opportunity for us to take a look. Like, how has this been helpful for us? Should we review some of the questions? Should we change any? But in doing so, um, you do lose some year-to-year results. It could be, just change one word in a question, you lose that history from one year to the next, but it did, it still didn't prevent anyone from being able to go into last year's results and take a look. Uh, but we did wanna make sure, you know, and I, and I think it's probably best practice to do that every few years anyway. Like, are these the right questions that we're asking? Should we change anything? Because the whole goal of this is to, to, to take action, right? It's not just to get a report and see it and put it in a, like, we wanna be able to get useful information from what, what, how people are feeling out there, and we wanna do something with it. So if there's questions or new initiatives that we wanna get feedback on, that we wanna trend out, every year, we're gonna, we're gonna take that opportunity to do that. So you see it in the report. One, another major change, major change, is the timing of this survey. So we usually do this in, uh, the week after February break. Um, and the feedback that we had gotten from leaders is like, I really would appreciate doing this a little earlier so that I can take action, so that I can figure out, instead of waiting to, to get these results in February, and then by then, it's a little late to do anything with it, uh, once it's all, you know, uh, once we get all the information back. So I, I, I will also say that, uh, October and November historically, in my experience, has been some of the toughest months. So we are asking staff, um, and families and students to take this survey, like, they're, you know, at, at some of the hardest times of the year, in, in my opinion, at least from my experience. But it's good. I think it's, it's great. Like, I feel like we should continue to do it in November with the goal of, of giving, uh, leaders an opportunity to reflect on the data and then, uh, uh, make any course corrections that they, that they see fit throughout the year. And it'll also allow us to, um, to do a mini survey at the end of the year and kinda compare if we're making progress right within the current year. Uh, this next slide is really on participation. Shout out to, uh, McMahon, Ian White, and Morgan students. We had some really high participation. We did grow in participation for, for the student survey from 69% to 71%, um, and that's grades three and up. Uh, for the staff, teacher and staff survey, shout out to Hoyoke High School North and Morgan. They had 100% participation in this survey, um, which is great.
All teachers did it?
That means all teachers, all staff, all custodians, everybody, everybody took the survey. Um, you know, so whatever, I think what they did is they, you know, they take it really seriously. They give time for the staff to do it, um, and they make a competition out of it. You know, they, you know, they wanna get participation. It's really important to them to hear what their staff feel and think. And, um, so shout out to those two schools. On the family survey, uh, same thing. We had, uh, we had an increase in the amount of families that filled out this survey, about 835, and, um, shout out to Dean Ian White and McMahon for their high, the, that had the highest participation. Uh, historically, you know, that, I'll always continue to quote Josh in this. Uh, one of the things that he said that really resonated with me, um, that in government and in schools, that what, some of the hardest, one of the hardest things to do is engagement, right? Um, we, we can survey, we can do events, we can do a lot of things, but it has been historically hard to get families to engage. So, um, shout out to those schools and, and the efforts that they made to get, uh, some higher participation rates among their families. Uh, the questions, uh, most of the questions look like this. There's five, um, five, uh, selections from extremely important or not at all important, or, uh, and then there's one in the middle. So the way to read this survey, when, when we're talking about favorable results, it's usually only the top two categories, which personally, I've had an issue with, but I am not a professional in survey-taking, and the professionals say that you should have that middle. Uh, but my psychology is that if I have a question there, let, let's say, you know, hey, how much do you like your job? Extremely, somewhat, not at all, slightly? There's gonna be times where like, I like it, and I might pick this, but if I knew that saying somewhat was going to be, uh, taken as a negative response, it probably would've changed my, my, my answer to the question one way or the other. I had been advocating to just eliminate that middle ground and kinda pick a side so we can really see how people feel, but, uh, the, the professionals in panorama and the people that do this for a living, uh, they, they don't like my suggestion. And so we kept it, and we wanna, we trust it. Uh, but in this case, for example, um, instead of 84% favorable, if we did include that somewhat category, then it would've been 94%. So that's how I, when I, when I see something, I always look at the question and see how many people selected that middle ground because it might change the way I think about, like, how we need to respond to this. So this is some of the highlights that we named, and, and again, in the memo, I go through more data points. Um, something that we wanna highlight is students really felt that it's important to them to do well in their classes, uh, which I, you know, this, this warms my heart. You know, we, we can make a lot of assumptions about how kids feel or how much they care about this work, but, um, this is really telling. Kids really do care about whether or not they do good in, in their classes and on their work, uh, as evidenced by about 84% in grades three to five and almost 80% in grade six to 12. This is a new question, so we don't have any benchmarks. Um, when it comes to how fair the rules are for students at the school, um, I was pleasantly surprised with, with the increases that we got. Um, it's more positive in elementary at 74% and in grade six to 12, 48. And the reason I was a little surprised at these results because I know we changed a lot this year for middle school students and for high school students in the, you know, in the, the yonder bags, for example, and rezoning and moving kids around. So, uh, then the middle section is, uh, things, you know, these were things that were, you know, middle of the road, and then the red section is, uh, negative data points that we really wanna dig into. So in terms of kids feeling connected to adults in their school, 61% in the elementary grades responded favorably, which was a six-point increase from last year. But we did see a dip of, of seven points, uh, in grades six to 12, uh, with 27% responding favorably to how connected do you, do you feel to the adults in your school? Um, how often do your teachers seem excited to be teaching your classes? We saw an increase of one point in, in elementary, 59%, and then a, a decrease of five points, or 36% in, in sixth, grade six to 12. or, or thirty-six percent in, in sixth, grade six to twelve. And, um, live, uh, does HPS live up to the commitment to build an anti-racist, inclusive, and culturally responsive community? We saw that was at forty-one percent, and I believe that was a newer question that we added uh, last year. And we don't, you know, it's, it's tough for third through fifth graders to really grasp what that question means, so, um, we only surveyed grade six to twelve for that question. This one was alarming. You know, um, we asked kids, how often are people disrespectful to others at your school, and only twenty-two percent responded favorably in elementary, and seventeen percent responded favorably in, um, in middle, middle and high school. That's a new question, so we don't have a benchmark to compare last year, but it's really important that we start gauging this, uh, um, for the, the culture of our schools. And this one, you know, honestly, we have struggled with this one um, for many, many years. Do books and materials at your school have people in them who look like, like you? Um, every time we've gotten this survey, we've made investments in, in, in materials that are culturally responsive. Uh, it just somehow isn't getting to the students to where they're feeling a, 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 a major difference in, in the, the books and the materials that they're using that, that's available to them. Uh, the teacher survey, uh, some, some positive highlights we wanted to lift was how easy it is to find interacting with students at your school who are different, who are from a different cultural background than your own. Uh, eighty-seven percent of our teachers responded favorably to that, that's a new question. And how comfortable are you incorporating new material about people from different backgrounds into your curriculum? Eighty-three percent. That was, uh, an, again, a new question. So you can see kind of the disconnect. Like, teachers are feeling they're comfortable with teaching culturally responsive materials, uh, but students just aren't really seeing that yet. Or at least the ones that we've surveyed. How effective do you think you are ma- uh, you are at managing particular disruptive classrooms? Uh, fifty-four percent. So over half of our teachers responded favorably, which was a five-point decrease. And then overall, how supportive has a school been to your growth as a teacher? Over half, uh, responded favorably, but that was an eleven-point decrease. Does HPS live up to its commitment to build an anti-racist, inclusive, and culturally responsive community? That wa- le- a little less than half of the teachers responded favorably, which was an increase from last year. Um, I do think that, you know, I don't want to make any assumptions, but I know that all sta- all staff are engaging in those, uh, professional development modules that we worked with, um, with an outside consultant, and that Steve Mogell is leading, and that could, uh, play into it. You know, I know th- this rezoning effort, you know, a lot of that was driven by our equity commitments. So, uh, staff have res- generally responded favorably to that. How, however, this one here, uh, was an eight-point drop to thirty-nine percent, which was overall, how positive is the working environment at your school? Um, we saw a nine-point dip. So we're, we're interested to see how tho- some of these will change in May, when we release a mini-survey, and, and how they kind of, how we benchmark moving forward after the rezoning year, how things look from year to year. Uh, staff, I don't want to go through all of these, but this was the, the non-teaching uh, positions at the school. So you can see, I highlighted, uh, two, again, two of the two positives, two kind of neutral ones. Um, and then, and then two areas of concern, which was when a district makes important decisions, how much input do staff have? And how optimistic are you that the district will improve in the future? We saw significant dips in that. Um, we could, you know, I, again, I don't want to make assumptions. What I'm gonna do with this data for, for the central office and for the district is, we're gonna put together a small focus group. We're gonna open it up to everybody in central office, because this was one that, that was also rated pretty low in central office. And we're gonna just get an understanding. You know, they rated technology facilities and, and these two really low, so we want to understand, like, when you answered that question, what did you mean? Like, what decisions did we make? Where, where you weren't involved in the input? You know, just to get a better sense, so that, um, I do feel that any major decision that we make, like, you know, you guys seen the extensive work that we did around rezoning. Um, anytime we make a really big decision, we do, we do try really hard to get staff input through multiple ways. So that's why I, it's hard for me to, to, to say, oh, this is why they're saying that. I want to, I want to learn more, I want to list, want to, tell me why you, what decisions have we made that, that you feel you weren't able to provide any input? Um, so, and, you know, I'll get into, like, district-wide implications at the end of this presentation. Um, but, you know, that, that, again, like I said, that is really the goal of this, is to take it in. What are we gonna do as a district? And then to make sure that principals are doing the same thing, like, read your school's data, and what are you doing about it, and communicate to your schools and your families what you, what you're doing. Um, for families, how often do you have conversations with your child about his or her class and the learning at school? Eighty-six percent responded favorably. This is a new question, so we don't have anything to benchmark it. And then how confident are you that you can motivate your child to try hard in school? Um, eighty-three percent of our families that responded feel, uh, responded favorably to that question. Um, then there was one on the, uh, again, around the building an anti-racist, inclusive, and culturally responsive community, sixty-six percent, which was a five-point decrease. And do you feel welcome at your school? Seventy-eight percent is pretty high, but it, it, it was also an eight-point drop from, from the year before. And again, this is the top two answers, so like, I don't, I don't know what these numbers would be if we added the somewhat category, but they would be higher than, than this. Um, because if anybody's like me, like, my mind is always gonna, if I don't feel too passionately about something, I'm always gonna go to that middle one. Um, does the school provide books and materials that reflect your family's cultural background? That was a seventeen-point drop to forty-seven percent, and how comfortable is your child in asking for help from adults at the school? Half of our families responded favorably, which was a thirteen-point dip. Now, implication, so, uh, after reflecting on this survey, you know, we're, we're committed to, what did we see? What are we gonna do? Um, and, you know, we did send a communication around building supportive school communities and, and doing a reset. Today, there was some professional development with all of our deans and assistant principals. We did have a PD day today. Um, we sent some guidance last week, which was in your packet around, around establishing a reset and some consistencies to, uh, to consequences, and i- it's stuff that schools have been asking for, like, you know, what's happening at Sullivan, and what, how the principal handles something at Sullivan is different than how it handles, like, give us some clarity around how we're expected to deal with certain situations. And we have provided that clarity to them. They've, uh, the, today, they were working with their school teams to internalize that guidance and to set plans for, um, for February on, on implementing that.
Ms. Wilson?
I, I also want to say I'm really happy to hear that, because that was part of, um, the thoughts for the retention working group um, that brought forward that, um, continuity between buildings. So it's really nice to hear that some of the work being done in that group is coming and, you know, bubbling upward and making a difference. So that's good to hear.
Yep. To, right on cue, the, developing the teacher retention strategy is really important. Um, it's evident in, in some of the responses that we got. Our staff want to feel appreciated, they, they love Holyoke, they want to stay in Holyoke, but they, they state that it's, it's been difficult, so, um, we hope to get a report in March on what, what came out of that group and what recom- I will say that there's a lot of data points and things that have already come out that we've already acted on, right? Um, we're not waiting for this report to come out to say, oh, man, we gotta do something about that, we're, we're actually taking action. Um, as evidenced by the, the message that I sent right before the break on some changes that we were making around, around staff and, and, and protecting their time a little bit. And the, the reset that I just talked about, in, in terms of improving the culture in our schools. Um, and then, the, most importantly, just making sure that every school is looking at their data, every school leader is looking at their data, and responding, what is this data telling me, and what am I gonna do in the next quarter? To, to make sure that we make some improvements in terms of how families are feeling, how students are feeling, and how staff are feeling in my building. So, uh, principals are in the process of doing that right now. And, uh, we're gonna be doing some quarterly, uh, SIP reviews in the next few weeks, and that's gonna be a part of the conversation, is like, what did you see in your data, and what are you doing about it?
So, Mr. Collmore?
Yeah, uh, in information you're getting, excuse me, information you're getting from parents, students, or whatever, on facility, uh, is there any catalog being kept on complaints about broken water pipe? Things, uh, being broken or something like this, and floors, especially floors, because it's a ha- really a hazard if they trip or something like this on these floors, huh?
Yeah.
Anything catalog to make sure that we're doing what we're
Not with this survey, so like, people, when they respond to the question, are you happy with the facilities? Like, they don't, they don't go into detail, they just pick. And again, I think that a lot of people pick somewhat, you know? And, and in this data, it's, it's a poor, it's, it, that's a negative response, right? We, I'd love for everybody to be completely happy with our facilities, but we do have some older buildings, and I will say, like, uh, Ronnie, I don't know, I can tell you with one hundred percent confidence that when I came here, you know, nine years ago, um, the state of the facilities and the way our buildings were being upkept, uh, it's night and day to what it is today. Like, our, our facilities team takes pride in their work, ownership, and they really care about making sure we have a really positive learning environment. And that, and, and I got to say, that wasn't the case. There was a, we had a pretty toxic environment in, between the the people running the facilities department, and then the people on the ground. It was like, they didn't want to work together, you know, and, and like, we did a lot of, a lot of, uh, relationship building. So the example I always use is you have craftsmen that go and fix a window, right? And, um, and then you ha- and, and they're, you know, they're, they're responsible, and we had a painter, for example. Uh, so there were a lot of custodians that they wouldn't, they wouldn't paint for the life of them. Ah, you guys got a painter, why, why am I gonna paint? Or, and then on, on the reverse side of that, somebody would come fix a window from the district, uh, maintenance team, and they'd just leave a complete mess, and they'd be like, I ain't picking that up, that's not my job. That's the custodian's job. It was just this weird, toxic behavior, and I, like, I noticed it, like, as soon as I walked in, and you could cut the tension with it, with a knife, and you know, we did a lot of, you know, Josh and I had talked about it a lot, we did a lot of team building. Now, you know, they go out and fix a window, they're, they're picking up after themselves. Now, a custodian is like, give me paint, like, I'll paint the room. You know, their, their work, because they, they're caring a lot about their work. So we don't have a, a catalog per se, but I can tell you that our buildings are a lot cleaner than they were in the past, and the, the facilities team is doing a, a really good job with, with the buildings that we have. Um, I think there was a lot of frustration around the internet, there has been a lot of internet outages, uh, across the district. Uh, we have some switches that are at the end of their useful life, and we're right now reviewing bids that are coming back from the, uh, from, from the bid that we put out that we're using E-Rate for to replace all the s- switches. They were replaced when I first started. A big investment was made with E-Rate. And then they're, they're seven years later, like, those things only last seven years. So when we make this investment, things are gonna get better for another seven years, but we gotta like, make sure we're taking care of that equipment.
Mr. Kennedy?
Um, so the biggest, the thing that sticks out to me the most of these statistics are the anti-racist and inclusive environment, uh, questions, because every single category, the students, the staff, or the students, the teachers, the staff, the families, it appears to be not ideal, um, at all. But you said that you're working with an outside group to kind of, uh, bring those numbers up a little bit. But I suggest also maybe working with the Holyoke Ethnic Studies Program to make, like, talk with the teachers. We have incredible teachers in our Ethnic Studies Program. No matter what school you go to, there's always gonna be an outstanding teacher teaching tha- those classes, and they're very, very knowledgeable. And maybe not just the teachers, but sit down with the Ethnic Studies students. I was, I took Ethnic Studies as much as I could, I worked with them over the summer um, to archive all their work. I actually just had a meeting today with that group. Um, and I know that they're very knowledgeable, and they have a lot of big ideas of what can happen in this district to improve that. So that's my recommendation, because, yeah, you could go to an outside group, you could also go in the district where we have a group that handles that. Um, and I know that all of the teachers in that program are very outspoken, and even former teachers, I'm sure would be happy to give some insight.
Thank you. And, and just for clarity, we, the outside consultant is helping with professional development, but like, it's not just limited to that. We have an Equity Task Force as well, that, um, Dr. Yadilet Cologne gets regular updates from. One of the things that that group is focusing on is developing uh, affinity groups for, for our staff, um, that I hope, I hope really, like, gets lifted, you know, where it's a, it's a heavy lift, but I think it's really important, um, that we have that. But that's a great suggestion, and I appreciate that.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Mrs. Soto, you probably already working on this, but I'm a little bit confused. It says forty-five percent of teachers responded favorably to, how respectful are the relationships between the teachers and students? Was a ten-point decrease. So, I'm trying to figure this one out. Shouldn't it be elevated? Because they got a ten-point decrease with forty-five percent, so maybe
Yeah. It's it's a forty-five percent is not a good number. I'd love that number to be higher, but it is a decrease, so that, that is a, a concern. Now, um, I, I'm not looking at that as like, a really good data point, that's definitely, it's, it, it's a concern, and I think that's part of the reason why, you know, we're, we're trying to do this reset and some professional learning. There's already been some, some changes. Um, but today, schools really worked on, like, what are these changes gonna look like in my building? Like, at Sullivan, for example, you know, they find, they, basically, we took away some offices to create more student support room spaces. So there's like, a triage room for, to figure out, like, what support a student needs. And then we, we now have like, an in-house detention room that di- didn't exist before. And then we have more of a counseling room. So instead of all those things happening in, in, you know, in one of those rooms, we, we kind of separated, like, this is what this room is gonna be used for, this is what that room's gonna be used for. Um, and the staff are, are really excited about that, that change right now, and they think it's gonna have an impact.
Thank you. Gloria, will you say your last name for me once, so I can hear how you say it, so I could try to say it, how you say it?
Doctor Gloria Caballero.
Caballero, so you don't use the roca?
I could.
It's up to you, however.
No, Caballero is okay.
Okay. Doctor Caballero?
Yeah. Thank you so much. You got it.
Thanks.
Nice for me.
First try. I just need to hear it.
So I was just wondering, thank you so much, uh, Superintendent, for the, for all this report. I was wondering if, number one, the survey was also, uh, conducted in Spanish. When we talk about language justice, and I think even though over eight hundred families participated, to me, it's a very low number nonetheless.
Yeah.
That's my first concern. And the second one was, since I didn't see the entire, all the questions that were entered on the survey, I don't know if students with special education were also part of the survey, you know, services that they're receiving. And, um, and number thr- and number three, uh, the amount of dropouts in our school. I saw the charts on, um, about absenteeism, and it's really alarming. And I don't know if that was also part of the numbers. I, I also see a lot of contradictions with the numbers, with the statistics, some, um, and even though we have had increases, I think it's also alarming, the, the amount of people that are not happy with how the schools are, are working. Um, so I don't know if we could have a conversation around that. Thanks so much.
Yeah, happy to have a conversation. Um, uh, so I did share a link to the full survey with all school committee members. You have access to You have access to get in there and take a look at all the questions. You could look at it by school, you could look at it. And, and I do, but, you know, I just named a few schools that had a hundred percent participation. That, you know, that, yes, that all students are included, not just, you know, uh Gen Ed students. All students are included. And I do believe, I, I wanna follow up on this. I'm almost one hundred percent positive that it was trans- it, there was a Spanish version. Of it for families to take, but um it's a great question and I'm gonna follow up, but I, you know, I would. I would find it hard to believe if we didn't have a Spanish option for, for this survey.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to her third question or point? I feel like we kinda covered it in the.
Yeah, I did, didn't really have it.
Ms. LaFave?
So I'm looking at schools in general, the breakdown um and per section. Um, so when we're looking at. One of the schools where I understand it went more to a middle school, but we're looking at school engagement itself. Only nineteen percent, um, which is concerning. But, um, this would more than likely be the student, student survey. Um, and the questions that were involved in that one is how excited are you about going to your classes? How focused are you on the activities in your classes? How interested are you in your classes? But looking at all these numbers. It is very. The percentage of any of them meeting at least fifty percent, very slim. Um, so the question is. How are the schools taking this information? And it's not to fix everything overnight. But you really need to start looking at your, your problem area and making a SMART goal. A timed goal, be it in one month, we're gonna implement this. And this is not also to drag it out and say for this one item, I'm gonna take a year to do. No, we need to pick, like, in this sense, school engagement, nineteen percent. What can you implement? What can you do to get the students more engaged and give, give me a plan, sort of like. Um, a layout of what's gonna be done, by when, by whom, because we also need accountability. If we're directing that it's gonna be this person and within two months, they're gonna have implemented this, we know to go back. Where is this? Um, cause although we may have changed. A few questions, just by a word or two, um, bottom line is our numbers are still not looking good, right? And we're, I did see that families, you have more favorable, you have a lot more green in the, in the family side. Um, yeah, um, another one is resources and that's any staff. And it's for the high school level, so very four percent. Um, so, I mean. I would kinda like to know what exactly each school's gonna do with this information that's provided to them. And how can we make this a turnaround at least in at least three areas? Um, before the end of the school year and make sure that it carries over into the new school year. Uh, we can't keep waiting for surveys to come out for us to see these numbers. Um, we need to do something with these numbers.
Yeah, I agree and um, I think it varies by school, so it depends on. Depends on the school, what they're gonna choose to lean into, but every single school is going to lean into something. Uh, as it relates to this survey and we're gonna be having conversations about that in their SIP quarterly reviews when we, we go visit their schools.
Right, because I was just reviewing the NIASC report as well and looking at that. And standards that weren't even met.
Tale of two schools.
Right, um, so, I mean, we've got a lot of work to do and if we expect to get our districts back. Uh, we really all need to be putting in forth the effort and making sure that we're holding accountable that these numbers are gonna go up.
Yeah, and and I, I do wanna clarify around the resources, so I know resources looks really low. But the two questions driving that is technology and facilities, so again, I think. You know, we, we need to, there's, we definitely have to fix our internet issue and it. It, it has, it wasn't even, it, for some, it's not even an internet issue. It's a, it's way too technical for, for me. But there's a configuration issue that's wrong with Google, so like. You can get to anything else, but if you try to use Google Home Suites, which is what all the district is using. There's something broken in the coding and we got seven different vendors that have been looking at the issue for like the last seven years. Um, and then. But, and then, not the last seven years, sorry, the last two years, cause that's how pers- persistent this problem has been. It, it goes back two years. Uh, and then the facilities, I just gotta, you know, I gotta, we gotta dig into. I know we made a s- uh, a lot of investments in our facilities over the summer. Schools look a lot better than they did, but. You know, we, we do gotta figure out from our staff, like, how could we make these schools uh more welcome, a, a place where you wanna be and. The facility itself, what, what investments that we do, um, should we be making?
Ms. Wilson? So you said that each school was going to pick a few areas to work on. Um, I would like the school committee to know what areas each school is gonna work on and I would like an update report. Um, the latest by May as to what's being done. Cause that gives a couple, you know, months for them to like dig in and kind of develop a plan. Um, so they could share out what, what they're focused on and what they're doing.
Our plan is to do another survey in May too, so we'll, we'll, um, a mini one, we're not gonna do all the questions. But the ones that we think are like really meaningful. Um, to prin- some principals were doing it, like Sasha, she, she was already doing that and Sarita, she would already do that in May, just, just to her staff. To see if, if some of the things that she was doing is, is being received well, so. Um, I can certainly, you know, pr- somehow capture. What some of the, what the principal's reflections and the leadership team's reflections were by school.
As if they're gonna be focusing on a few things.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna, they're all gonna look at it and they're all gonna do something different with it, right?
Exactly, that's right.
Do this, or I'm gonna do this. So it's hard for me to say what they're gonna be leaning into, but.
Right.
My expectation is that they are reviewing it and that they are, you know, uh responding to that feedback.
Uh, Dr. Rivera Cologne?
I have two quick questions and then a comment. So the first question is. Is there a possibility to have a rewarded question about inclusivity for grades three to five? Because I understand that as the question stands, they may not understand it, but kids understand way more than we give them credit. For in terms of inclusivity. Um, and then will you, are you thinking about including genders beyond the binary male and female? Cause I could imagine that if someone doesn't identify in that, it might put a damper on the survey from the get-go. So that's another suggestion. And then this has been mentioned before, so I'll be brief. Um, the common thread about anti-racist and inclusive practices that go spans all the people in the different parts of the survey. I think that the work that is being done by the Equity Task Force is amazing. But it's not gonna translate into any points in the survey for even next year. So I think it might for the teachers and staff, but not necessarily for our students. So maybe thinking about what could be some things that we could use that could have an impact a little bit faster. Then, or at least that they, that there's communication about what's being done. So that they know that even if they're not seeing results yet, they know that it's being worked on. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, so you said that there's gonna, there's gonna be another survey that would be coming out, but I would also, another recommendation to have like in-person. Um, kinda conversations with the students and staff, because in surveys, important context gets missed, right? The question is very specific and then the answers are also very specific, so you don't really know like. A hundred percent what the student or staff are talking about. Also, I am someone who took the survey, it was a very quick thing, it was a, get the Chromebook, take the survey, we have start class. So hurry up, right? Um, for example, the NIASC thing, two people came into the school and we had a, like a conversation. With them about it and I'm sure that really cleared up, um, what would have been more broad on a survey. And this might not just be, um, the, uh, you and your team, but also maybe. Members of the school committee could talk to the students, because if we are exiting receivership, then everyone in the school committee, every member of the school committee needs to know. How to improve the lives of the students and staff in their buildings. So I think that the survey is, might be. It's a good idea and it's a valuable resource, but also an in-person conversation, like, um, similar to like a town hall type thing. Um, would be beneficial.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned how you were good, how you took the survey, cause that was my one and only question. Um, because I have a kid in two different buildings, so I only took the survey once, I didn't think to take it twice. But I was wondering how the kids took it, they didn't take it at home with us, so I'm glad that you mentioned that you took it at school. Um, but taking that into account of like when they're getting the time to take it. Um, one of the questions that confused me is it asked the parent how the child felt about something and like, if you're not. Asking the child about that, you wouldn't even know the information. Um, but one of the things I would like to see added to the parent survey is how do you feel? Communication with your school is, um, you know, do you feel like you get notified by the school when it's appropriate? Do you feel like you have more, would you feel like you'd like to hear from the school more often? Do you feel like you can connect and contact the school and staff members and teachers in a, in an appropriate manner? Um, I would like to hear more about that, but, alright, I see no other hands on the topic, so we are going to move along. Thank you, Mr. Soto. Um, under new business, can someone tell me what this acronym exactly stands for?
New England Association, hold on, let me, um.
School accreditations?
I have it.
I like.
That's a good, yeah. New England Association of Schools and Colleges.
Okay, so that report is in your package, just kinda as FYI, we didn't intend to have a presentation on it. Um, if anyone has any questions, feel free to raise your hand and let me know. Um, but if not, we'll just keep moving right, yes, Ms. LaFave?
So our recommendations, obviously, this was a voluntary, um, participation, um. What, like, last year that they came, I remember some of us attended. Mr. Wellahan, you were one of them, correct? We sat in the media room, um. What are your plans with the information that they've given? Because they have provided recommendations.
Yeah.
Is this something that?
We have to respond, so we have, uh, we have to respond to the report by May first. And then there's a follow-up visit when they come out to see if we've implemented some of the recommendations. And we also have to decide if we wanna be a part of that association as well. Like, I, I don't think that they've elevated any, anything that we weren't already aware of. And in fact, like, I'm not a fan of the, the process. You talk to a few people. And then you, you make determinations on the, on the whole school, like, there were a lot of, in my opinion, inconsistencies and. One end, they're saying it's a safe environment and people feel safe, and then on another page, they're saying it's not safe. So it, it was, it's, I think the Panorama Survey reaches a lot more people. And gives us a lot more information, um, as opposed to interviewing a few people. Um, it, it, it was some, you know, there were some concerns in there that we need to address, like. You know, that, that some people had expressed that the doors are left open sometimes. That's not part of our policy, that's not a part of our procedures. The doors should never be left open. But I think they're referring to sometimes in the auto body shop when it's really hot out. Get a little warm, so they put the bay doors open and, and like, gotta tell them, hey, you can't do that. I know it's uncomfortable, how could we make it more comfortable? But anybody could just walk through those doors, right? Um, and we have a vestibule at Dean where, one of the things they mentioned in there is that adults don't have to. Like, present an ID to get access to the school and. I'm sorry, that's just not true, like, there's a vestibule there. You can't access the school unless you go into that best, vestibule, check into the main office. And even then, like, you have to get buzzed in, so I don't, it, it's hard for me to understand what they meant by that. Other than like, absolutely, I've walked some of the schools and seen that the, the shop. Bays are open because it's, you know, just for comfort. And then I've also seen where, in other schools, at, at the North Campus, for example, there's probably. You know, forty different doors and, and some kids like prop- well, they, they go, believe it or not, like, some kids will go to Dunkin' Donuts or something. Uh, during lunch and then another kid will prop the door open and let them in, like, that's not a part of our policy. We, we are not allowed to do that, but it's done. And, and, um, we need to do a better job. Like, I can tell you when, when that happens, it's corrected, like, if we find the student doing that, hey, you can't do that, you know? Um, nobody's like turning a blind eye and just allowing that to happen. And if they are, I wanna know about it.
So is it, is it fair to say that when you do provide the re- your response to it, that we will have? It will be provided to us as well?
Absolutely, if that's the desire of the body, we'll, we'll for sure. Um, we're gonna provide a response and then. Um, so this process happens like within a ten-year period, so it, it just so happens that, um. They were supposed to come out during the pandemic and then the pandemic hit, so it was delayed and delayed and delayed. But like you mentioned, it is a voluntary process. Uh, I would say that this would be really, really helpful. If we didn't have SEN reviews every year, if we weren't doing quarterly SIP reviews every year. Um, if we weren't doing Panorama Survey every year, like, I could see this process being really valuable to a school district. That isn't doing those things and wants to get a temperature check on, on their buildings. I feel like all those things that we're, we are doing give us a good sense on what's going on, um, in our schools. But we're, you know, we are a part of the process, we're gonna follow through, we're gonna make sure we, we, we go through this process and then evaluate from there.
When did you say your response was due? Ms. Wilson?
So it, my school district is also, um, in the process of a NIASC review and it's a very time-consuming. Very intensive process, um, and I wanna echo the statement of the, is it a really a value-added process? Um, in my district, we, you know, we asked our teachers, is this something we wanted to continue doing or not? Um, you know, and we said yes, but truly there, from my understanding. There really is no, it's not necessary to belong to this organization. And so, um, from someone who's living this process, it's been a year and a half process, um, in my district. Um, where our professional development has been geared towards this, doing all of the work that's necessary. I just wanna echo, um, what you said, that is just, it's extensive and is there true value? Is the, is the ongoing question. I think schools never wanna lose something they already have. But as we look to really use our resources wisely, is this something that the district wants to do going forward? I, I can say, I, I would say I'm not sure.
I, I think to your point, Ellie, like, Ms. Wilson, um, if we weren't doing all these other things. And we didn't really have a good sense of what our school, what's happening in our schools, that would absolutely be helpful. But doing that and all these other things, I don't, like, we gotta evaluate whether that's worth. Is, I'm glad you said that, because I had staff members like, oh my god. You have to do the, i- i- it's a very intense process, self-evaluation piece, um, so.
Alrighty, moving along, ongoing business, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from twelve eighteen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Updates from subcommittees, um, Ms. Wilson on policy? Ms. Wilson, on policy, I know you have a lot of second reads that we're gonna include for our February meeting.
I would like, since we're, um, putting items on the agenda, I would like a generic policy review item on the agenda. Because if I meet and it takes me a couple of days to update the policies, I am not going to have that information two weeks before our meeting if I meet two weeks before our next scheduled full school committee meeting. So I would like just a standing if there's any, you know, first reads, second reads, you know, or final approvals.
Especially because we're doing so much right now.
Right, I, I would like that to kind of like just be standing and then I, we can say, I can add to it. So I am gonna be looking to schedule our meeting, um, this, coming up in February. We have over three hundred policies. And I just want to let you know that, um, uh, ma- uh, Massachusetts Association, Association for School Committee, they update, update policies every month. So I'm trying to coordinate what they've updated with what we're gonna work on. Because otherwise, we're just gonna be in this like little cycle of interestingness that we find ourselves in.
We're a little backlogged.
We're, yeah, we're about three hundred policies behind, um, out of date. So we will be having our next meeting and I will, um, look at what we're gonna include. I know there's gonna be discussion about recess, uh, because that was sent to the policy subcommittee just to have a discussion about that. So I do know that that's gonna be included.
Yeah, they're working on a revised middle school schedule right now too. So if we could, uh, so what I'll do, Ms. Wilson, is with this, under policy, I'll put first reading and second reading, and I'll try to keep a tally as well. And then if you have things to add, just get them over to me as we go. Um, that way, we don't have to necessarily keep that two weeks because like you said, sometimes it underlaps. One thing is we'll be discussing at the retreat anyway, though, is we're probably gonna be meeting, uh, more frequently. So we can help with that as well. Alright, thank you. Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Willahan?
Thank you. I, uh, spoke with Sean and ready to do another, another presentation, finance. So I just have to schedule that after talking to my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. By the way, I sent out, um, subcommittee assignments on the seventeenth. I asked everybody to respond and only heard back from two of you. So if you guys can confirm that you received your subcommittee assignments for me, please. Joint City Council School Committee, the new chair of that is Ms. LaFave. Obviously, there's been no meeting since. So do you guys have anything scheduled yet?
You know, I have to send an email out to them and figure out, because I know this year it's, it falls on them.
It's the city side, yeah. And it's Councilordane.
I saw that it was Councilordane, President, um.
And Grainey and Tessa.
Tessa, yep.
Okay. Alright, moving along. Uh, one second, please. One second, guys. I'll get right back to you. Dr. Rivera Cologne on diversity, equity and inclusion.
We canceled our last meeting because we were waiting on information on how to solicit input from the public because we already have some resources of great things that have been done in the district before. Since then, uh, Mr. Soto has made available, um, the information and I have it for review for our next, um, diversity, equity and inclusion meeting. It was scheduled for Valentine's Day, so I'm hoping that we can maybe have it the Wednesday before. That would be February seventh, but I have to confirm with my committee members to make sure that that can work.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson or Mr. Collamore, did one of you need something?
Yeah, wanted to know.
No, I know you don't email, don't worry. I got your back. You're on finance in Joint, uh, City Council School Committee. Okay, so we tabled this from the last meeting, I think because Eleanor Wilson wasn't here and it was discussed in policy, I believe. So do we want agendas for a subcommittee and accompanying documents to be sent only to the members of the subcommittee or to be sent to the full committee? Ms. Wilson?
So I've had the pleasure of, um, you know, members attending, um, the policy subcommittee meetings. And they can only do so if they know what we're going to be discussing and if they have information to share. Um, and without that, I don't really know, um, you know, what's going on in different committees. And so I, I would recommend that when we get pack, that when packets go out for subcommittee meetings, that at least we get an electronic version of it and a hard copy to Mr. Collamore so that we know what's going on. So if we do have any input, we can attend the meetings. That's what's where I was saying from.
Feel free to make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that, um, the packets be sent out to all school committee members when there is a subcommittee meeting. Um, and it can be sent out electronically with a hard copy going to Mr. Collamore.
Okay, a second. Oh, I heard Ms. Rosalie Tensley Williams first. Any further discussion? Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I was just, great. Why don't, so, um, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, the Admin Assistant for the Council, he'll do admin, he'll do, uh, calendar invites and in that description box include the agenda items with whatever links to whatever important, you know, uh, information that's in that packet. And he'll add me to every council one and I'll just skim through the agenda in the invite. And if there's some, it's just helpful, a little efficient, um, for those that want to opt in to the electronic version. And then obviously those that want to opt into letting this superintendent know so that we can make sure that hard copies are getting to those folks like Mr. Callamore that would rather have that opposed to reviewing it electronically.
Yeah, something to add to our Admin Assistant job description. Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to clarify, so when I speak to this, I'm also talking about our, our student representatives too. So I just want to be clear when I say that, I want to make sure that they're, they are members. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, moving on. Uh, the motion was made by Ms. Wilson and it was seconded by Tensley Williams.
You're welcome.
Mr. Garcia?
Did everybody want an electronic version with the exception of Kelly? Or is there somebody, anybody else that would rather? Oh, okay.
On that, um, who wants paper school committee agendas? Because when I was discussing this with Shayna over at Central Office, it was my, I'm the one who said, we don't all need paper, we have the internet. So when she sends the agenda, everything has links on it for you to link out. If she prints everything for every member, which I found out she had been doing, it's an extreme waste, in my opinion. But anybody that would prefer to absolutely get that paper agenda, please just let me know at the end of the meeting and I will make sure that you get it, okay? So that was my call, just FYI. But I'll mention it to Gustavo as well. I think right now, three of you are getting it. Um, but if anybody else wants it, just let me know. Alright, great. So moving along, uh, ongoing business, uh, update on absent attendance and chronic absenteeism. I'm sure you all saw the report that Desi put out. I got interviewed on, um, and, uh, all of the new supports that the Secretary of, of Education's Office is going to, uh, be launching, which is super helpful. But I saw Ms. LaFave's hand go up, so Mildred?
So when I'm reviewing our attendance one for January fourth, it says forty point eight, which is a five-point improvement, but we're comparing it to last year. But if we are comparing it to last month, last month it was thirty seven point three. If we go to November, it was thirty four point three. So, you know, chronic absenteeism is one of the accountability measures. My concern with that is everything's included in there. So now I'm asking if we could please get a breakdown then of suspensions would be counted as an absence. Students that are, um, pas- well, it would be medical, technically, right? Because my thoughts is when you, when you have a student who goes out and is part of the partial hospitalization program, obviously, you're losing there. Partial can sometimes be fifteen days, just like it could be thirty days, it could be five days. You never know. But let's say that was a fifteen-day child that was there at partial. You're already at fifteen days. What, it's very slim to none that, you know, a slim chance that it's never gonna happen again in, in, in that school year? It's more than likely that something else is gonna occur. So now that child falls into the, um, chronic absenteeism. When you look at habitual truancy, right, that's more of a purposeful stuff. I can see where chronic absenteeism could be in that one. But when I'm looking at medical, when I'm looking at suspension, suspension is the district who caused the chronic absenteeism. Now, in the sense, you know, that if, if they're suspending them more than often, right? And they already met the eighteen, then obviously they're accounted for that, right? But it's under a suspension. It's not that the, that the student didn't chose not to come. What other things are we putting into place is my other question? Because I know historically that two-hour tutoring is not beneficial at all. Because the two-hour starts at the moment that the person leaves their home to go to the school to pick up the items, brings the items, drops it off at the student's house. And if there's only fifteen minutes left, that's it. Personal note, I've gone through it. And, and that was what was said. It, the two hours, that's, that's how that's accounted for. I don't think that's even given credit when you have your two-hour tutoring, like, and attendance. It's still, they're out, you know? So, um, we've got to be more creative and technically the Desi needs to be more creative. And then if students are out for hospitalizations, you can't prevent that, then how are we going to provide them the opportunity to continue with their education? Harsh, in partial, there's, it's really not learning. I mean, a lot of it was coloring. It needs to be more, more meaningful. So I don't know how we can be providing the stuff that the student would have been working on to the partial program because they do have a teacher that goes in there and say, this is what the student is responsible for completing. While they're there, I mean, I don't know. I just feel we do need that breakdown because we need to justify as to why these chronic absenteeisms are happening. Number two is out of that, when we're looking at, uh, hospitalizations or, um, those who are on IEPs that I would like to technically know, what's the percentage out of our special education is for social emotional? Because he talks about the whole child, but it's kind of hard to do the whole child when even within our Commonwealth, we don't have enough resources when it comes to mental health. Very hard to find a child psychiatrist. Psychologists come and then they go. A child develops a relationship with this person in six months. They're telling the child, I'm leaving because I'm gonna go make money somewhere else. And so really, when you're looking at the mental health world of, you know, services, it's, it's not that great and up to par, not just for, for, for kids, even for adults. So, I mean, if we could get the breakdown of the numbers, because we, we need to have a game plan as to why, why this is happening. Because obviously, we don't have the resources, help us get those resources.
And to your point too, um, like, I don't know what our current policy is with, if you test positive for COVID. Luckily, my family all got it over Christmas break, but the doctor's office was, he needs to quarantine for five days and he cannot go back to school until he tests negative and then has to wear a mask for like ten days. So just those five days. And so I don't, are we, are we sorting out any of that information too? Because again, that's not the district's fault, right? Like, this isn't that kids are just missing school. And granted, some are missing school because they just don't want to come. But like you said, to have the numbers broken down, because you can't game plan a big number, you need to break it down and then strategize, just like with the survey results on who's hitting where. Ms. Wilson?
Well, I think that there's twofold. I don't think the state cares about the rationale as to why students are chronically absent. They're just capturing a number they can use to show that they're interested in that. Because we know students need to be in school to learn. But I think what I hear is that, you know, we're concerned and we want to delve into it a little more. I just want to clarify, the state doesn't care and we can't, it doesn't matter when we report this out, they're just gonna look for those numbers. Go ahead, sorry.
Hold on, y'all. Mr. Kennedy?
To Ms. LaFave's point, or in Ms. Reynolds' point, actually, um, the mental health aspect of this is big because you said like, oh, some students just don't want to come. Why don't they want to come? Did something happen in school? Is something happening at home? Ms. LaFave said, pointed out, we don't really have the resources to figure out why, but we need those resources. Because if someone's coming, getting bullied in school, reporting it and nothing's happening, then that student's not gonna want to come to school. Or I, I also pointed out in my presentation, there's a high percentage of burnout in students right now. That's gonna make them not want to come to school. So we need to figure out why they don't want to come to school and provide them with more support. Because we have an, we have impeccable guidance counselors, but do we have enough guidance counselors to take care of this absenteeism for students who aren't getting medical excuses? For students who just need a little bit of support? And it could be very well that students just, oh, my alarm didn't go off, I don't want to wake up. But it could also be something happening in classroom, something happening at home or just the student in general, just not doing good mentally and can't handle what the school is throwing at them right now.
Mr. Soto?
Yeah, um, I think, I, I'd love to sit down with you and figure out, um, this is how we've presented the data. I want to present it, I want to make sure that you all get what you need. So it sounds like the reasons for absentee, absences is, is a report that the school committee would like to see. I want to make sure that, um, we can deliver on that on a monthly basis. So we got to work with our data team to figure out if, if we can break that down and then, um, hopefully get it to what the committees, um, desired, you know, uh, breakdown would be. And I, I also, you guys mentioned the state accountability. I think that the biggest change that, that was made in the state accountability was that chronic absenteeism now takes more weight. So I think it's the state actually caring more about kids showing up and trying to get districts to do more around just getting kids to, to show up. So, you know, more weight is gonna be put on chronic absenteeism in the accountability system. I think it went from ten percent to twenty-five percent or something like that, but.
Maybe because they couldn't, uh, hold us as accountable because of score fluxes and COVID MCAS stuff. Ms. LaFave?
So although the state may not care, um, you know, at the end of the day, and it's, we got to do what we got to do. As school committee members, we can create resolutions and ask and lobby for, for a change. Okay, you want chronic absenteeism, then what it should be based on is then habitual truancy. And that's where your chronic, it's gonna be broken down. Yes, you may have this, this percentage, but what's the percentage where it's habitual, um, truancy versus it's a medical versus it's, um, suspension, what have you? That's, that's just, you know, we really have to start working together, you know, and, and kind of saying, you know, you want this, but then we, we got to meet in the middle here. Because you can't change, you know, COVID, when COVID came, and it's true, somebody tests positive for COVID. What, you know then what we'll do? Then why don't you go ahead and come to school, right? So that way, you're not chronically absent, just don't say nothing. Now you put the risk and li- risk the lives of everybody else. So, I mean, come on now.
Your hand was up as well, right? Dr. Caballero?
Thank you so much. I'm glad to hear that, well, all these comments. I was wondering, well, uh, looking at this breakdown, um, data, it says referral data, FYI, just for our information, right? But you see alarming numbers when we talk about cutting classes in the two thousand. We see alarming numbers defines of school authority and also general disruptive conduct. But also we see offensive or threatening language, threat to students, vandalism, school property, et cetera, et cetera. So with all these data, yes, it's good that we have it, but um, and I don't know how can the school committee work with other departments? As Ms. LaFave was saying. Because it's not only a matter of these are the numbers, what are the high needs these students have mentally and also socially? I keep talking about housing, infrastructure, drugs around, drugs used and abuse around schools and, and their homes. So. And we also have a case here, a mother talking about what is happening with her child. And that's why the child doesn't want to go back to, to school. So it's good that we know all this, but what are we going to do? I would love, I look forward to that retreat. Really for us to focus on um, how can we, I mean, truly make a change, I mean, make a difference in the lives of these students? We only talk about the numbers and this is it, uh, but we really have to do major interventions socially in our city. And I have a question for um, Ms. Wilson. I would like to know if a policy, because I also read about the cell phone use, one of the policies that need to be reviewed. And I was wondering if that policy is included in the student's handbook.
So that's a procedure. Um, it is not, it falls under a procedure, um, and I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I mean, right? We're calling it a pilot, right? Um, and we piloted it at the middle schools last year. Rolled it out to middle and high schools this year. And we did draft a procedure that went through the policy subcommittee. They were able to review it, make recommendations. I believe it went through D E I as well. Um, to make some recommendations, but um, it is, it is a, a procedure that got vetted through, through the proper subcommittees.
Yeah.
Well, I was asking this because I've been asked, you know, on the streets. Um, what are the rights and the duties and the things that the students need to know? Is there anything that is written down in their student's handbook? So they know that these are the policies and this is what they should be, you know, abide, abiding by.
Regarding the yonder bags specifically? Regarding yonder bags specifically? So it hasn't reached the handbook because it's still a pilot? So once, if we, if the district adopts it fully, then it would become, but they did get documentation uh, around the expectations of it. Um, that I know because my daughter goes to the high school and my son goes to Sullivan where they're, they're uh piloting it as well. Um, but I'm glad you brought this up, even though uh, we're a little off topic, but um, I just had gotten, reached out too recently that high school seems to be really struggling with enforcement of their yonder bags recently. And that we need to consider it also including iPads, smartwatches, headphones and AirPods. Uh, because you can have your watch on and that's a phone because your phone is on in the yonder pouch, so therefore it's connecting to your phone. Um, but you know, that being said, uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Um, so I was actually on a, in student government, I was on a subcommittee for the student handbook to kind of create rules on behalf of student government. And those individual things are listed in the handbook for being prohibited in a classroom. The yonder obviously hasn't been in there, but they are in the student handbook. And I believe it was either this year or last year, every student got a copy of the student handbook. Did they go right in the recycling? Probably. But they are in there and they did receive a copy.
Yeah, so the yonder was like in a, a way to help enforce the, the no phone policy.
Look, I, this, this is really hard. Ms. Brunel, um, it's a hard year, it's a hard, you know, the FOMO and fear of missing out and I can tell you, we're, you know, there's some level of addiction that all of us have to our devices and I think in the long run, this is going to be more common across the nation where and I, and I'll, I'll start, I also say that like in the student handbook, like the use of cell phones is already not, you know, it's, it's prohibited from being used in the classrooms. Where this is just a tool to help, um, you know, we, we, we started with yonder as a tool to help enforce that. Um, it's been, it's been rough. I think that, you know, part of the reason you see more kids in the hallways, more kids skipping classes is because some of those kids might have been on their phone in the back of the classroom, not, you know, not engaging. And now, now they're, they're struggling with, with not having that device or music or something and um, for some people, eh, for some of our students, that's a real struggle. We knew that that was going to be a struggle. I just don't think that we uh, that that that's a, a, a part of the struggle that we, we put, that we expected, but you know, I, I think in the long run that it is good for kids to, to, for them to be more engaged in their learning and less on their phones while they're in their, I know with one hundred, I mean, I got a kid that I mentor and, you know, during one of my mentorship sessions with him, I meet with him once a week for lunch, um, his phone goes off and he went. He clearly is not using his yonder bag. But guess what? He's also not using his phone in classroom. So you know, I really, I'm, I'm okay with that, right? He's not using the yonder bag, but his phone's not coming out. He is aware that he's not supposed to be pulling out his phone. He knows that um, you know, that that's not, not, not what we're expecting.
So I'm going to stop the conversation on the yonder bags because it's not on our agenda tonight. And I think that maybe we should add this to our February meeting and get a, a formal update. Maybe you could speak to the principals that have piloted the program, see how things are going in their buildings. Um, see if there's anything that we can add or implement to improve or, or move it forward. Um, so let me just make sure. So we were on chronic absenteeism. Any other comments on that? Seeing none, we're going to move forward. Uh, staffing update, uh, is there anything that you'd like to formally add to that, Mr. Soto? I know it's just an FYI. No? Okay, out of state field trips?
Let me just go back.
To?
To the um, staffing?
Sure. If you'd like to comment?
Yes.
Sure.
So um, it's nice to see that there's um, you know, that speech and language therapy has been put in place and so there's significant less students. Well, there are significant more students, I should say, receiving services. Um. But you know, and I know it's a national issue. I understand that. But I would be remiss without saying I am definitely concerned that there, you know, about the number of students who are not getting their um specialized instruction. Um, and so again, I, I'm just, you know, making sure that uh, parents are aware of this and that there is tracking so that students um can have their services when there are providers available.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Kennedy?
I'm so sorry. I know we want to move on. Superintendent Soto, you said that we, each staff member has an exit interview. Who's conducting the exit interviews?
Each staff member has an opportunity to do an exit interview. I, I can't sit here with a straight face and tell you that they show up. So it, uh, we usually have a member from human resources available to do it. Um, if they feel more comfortable doing it with their supervisor, they can do that, but there's the option of doing it with their supervisor or doing it with somebody in human resources. I will admit that that, as part of the teacher retention working group, that was one of the things that was identified as needing to be strengthened. And it is something that we need to get better at, like having a, a much better system of, of making sure that we get more participation in, in some of our exit interviews to give us good information to be able to understand, you know, why a particular staff member might be, might be leaving the district, especially mid-year. That's not necessarily typical, but um, it is becoming more and more common, not just in Holyoke, but across the state, people live, leaving, you know, during the school year, not waiting till the end of the school year.
Okay, thanks. Um, out of state field trips, we have note of, a notice for MedCaf is going to the Connecticut Science Center. Yes, Ms. LaFave?
What is, what is, what is it that you want from us with this? Because one, this only has, it's a request. Doesn't have the date, says what the cost per student is. It doesn't say how many students are signed up for it. Um, it doesn't have how many staff is going to be going there, but it does say that a nurse is needed. So is this just the beginning phase, like the start? So it's just telling us, hey, these people are planning to go? Um, and then maybe next month? We'll get like how many students, how much staff?
Yeah, the, I mean, there is a step in the process that any out of state field trips have to get approved by the receiver, by the school committee. Um, so this is just a initial request first to get approval. Then once the approval happens, then there's a whole separate set of documentation, which includes how many kids, parent permission, all that, all that other stuff. So the, I started putting these in the packet because I thought that this was um, e- eventually this is going to be information that you guys will have to approve unless you delegate that responsibility to the superintendent. Um, so I've been including this, anytime I got a, an out of state field trip, um, I've been including it as part of the packets to get in the habit of, of that being a regular part of, of what the school committee reviews. If, if you'd prefer that this go to a subcommittee or something like that, I don't, I don't know, but that, that's why it's in the packet.
Yeah, I know that you've put them in the packet, but they were, was much more information than this. That's why I'm questioning it. You have given us where it tells us how many students, it tells us how many staff. That's where I think that it should come. Um, so that way we have an idea of how many students are signed up for it? Is it fifty students? How many, do we have enough staff? Is a nurse going to be needed? This is where we're going. But here you're just telling us where they'd like to go, but I don't even have a date. There's nothing else here. So unless it missed that there's another page to this and it just didn't get uploaded in here, and that's why I'm asking a dumb question.
It's not a dumb question.
More than likely.
So we will be a little clear on how these come through. Um. The goal, eh, it, the goal for me would be like, I think it's okay for them to go to the Connecticut Science Center. I don't have an issue with it. But if there's ever an uh, an out of state trip or an overnight trip that the school committee is like vehemently against, I want to know that so that, you know, um.
No, we just want to make sure there's enough staff for the amount of students or if, if you're going to have parent volunteers, making sure that they are quarried.
Yes, that's part of the process.
If that's what we do. Okay.
Um, we haven't gotten notified formally yet of the high school's trip to Puerto Rico in April yet, huh? Or what about a senior class trip happening this year? We haven't heard anything about that yet. And those are usually out of country, so. Another dual language program. Oh, no. Well, the dual language program is going to, to Puerto Rico in April. We haven't seen that yet, so.
I'd just like to know on that report that we're getting for students going to ships. Where is the finances coming from?
Oh, probably the, in the, the actual school budget, right?
It's in the school budget and this one says that there's also a fee fourteen dollars per student. So it's a combination, could be from a club, it could be from the joy money that the schools have. Um.
Is that usually told to us with the form?
If, if, if that is information that the school committee would like, we could make sure that forward at that time there.
If there's any extra expense?
What about students that can't afford it? Can we help them?
Yes, absolutely. No, no student will be excluded from being able to participate. The schools will figure that out for sure.
Last year when MedCaf eighth grade went to DC, the district stepped up huge, huge. And then tons of fundraising. I mean, it barely cost those kids anything. And then there were some parents that because it became so affordable, were willing to chip in for those that couldn't. But that's a good question. We want to always make sure everyone's included. Ms. Tensley Williams?
Um, do you know how many students will be taking that trip?
Puerto Rico?
Uh huh.
Um, I could email, I think it was Ms. Vega and find out how many have deposited and signed up.
Because we could give donations. I'd be happy to.
Yeah, that's an expensive one. It's nine hundred dollars per student. Yeah, and they're doing fundraising now, so.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, like they just did a cookie dough and braided bread fundraiser and stuff like that.
Well, we can still volunteer and give donate.
Yeah, or help with fundraising. Yeah. Anybody else? No? Okay. Um, student activity approval, there isn't anything, uh, referral and discipline data. Um, does anybody have anything they want to, Ms. LaFave?
I reached out um, to the special education director because I noticed that we don't have them here. So just for those that are interested, the C, the next CPAC meeting will be on Wednesday. It will be virtual. And it'll be a presentation on bullying. Um, she sent me the flyer link, but I'm going to go ahead, you know, and kind of share it on Facebook, but uh, check on, on the H P S website and see if there's a link um, to register for those who are interested. Again, it's this Wednesday um, at um, on Zoom. Yeah. That's a good question. I'm not sure the time. Oh, wait, she sent me the flyer. Why not open it? Um, it will be at six PM. Yep.
Okay, thanks. All right, moving into announcements, the school, middle school building committee meeting is Monday, January twenty ninth. We changed it because uh, our bids got delayed slightly and we can't meet to talk about the bids until all the bids are in. Um, so we actually had a brief today, um, a lot of our, what's the name of the bids that were already in? Like, there's like preset costs, file sub bids are in, general con, general contractor bids will be in Thursday by two o'clock. Um, and then um, we'll be having quite the meeting on Monday, the twenty ninth, if anybody's interested. Uh, Ms. Wilson?
Where is that located?
They're on Zoom.
Okay.
Strictly on Zoom. Um, we're, we're a big committee and all of our, um, you know, our managers and the architecture firm and everything, so it's on Zoom. Um, should be on the city calendar. I would assume it's on the city calendar. But if anybody needs a direct link, just ask me and I'll send it to you. Yeah, just uh, let me know. Um. Gloria, I'll just send it to everybody. So you have it. Uh, I know Jay watches them all. Um, okay, great. Uh, there is attendance celebration for the district on Wednesday, January thirty first um, at Sullivan School at five PM. There's a DPAC meeting on Thursday, February thirteenth at six PM. I want to mention, uh, we got an email today that Homework House is planning their spring spelling bee. That usually happens in April. And last few years has been Mildred, myself and Irene, and we have yet to make it out of the first round. If anybody wants to join us, um, there is a fee involved. It's a sponsoring of the Homework House which is paid for out of our sunshine fund, which brings me to the fact that only half of us are paying into our sunshine fund. So those of you who are not, I will let you know, is, it's okay. So here it is. So.
Could you do that privately?
Oh, sure. I mean, maybe you were just never notified, so didn't know, but I will let you all know. I had an email drafted, but I saved it. So yeah, so our sunshine fund, uh, you can pitch into that out of your paycheck and it's ten dollars a month. And it goes towards paying for things like this or things like when we put an ad in the program for the Hall of Fame ceremony or when we go out to eat at Christmas time or you know, when I get food for the retreat next Sunday. So um, I will email you all. I actually had already started drafting one. Uh, to let you know who isn't paying and who is, and if you guys would want to rectify that and who you can talk to over at central office. Um. Couple more uh, announcements. Um, there is new member charting the course. I myself signed up for it as well because I figured, hey, why not take a refresh? It is, the closest one available to us is March ninth. It's taking place at Chickaby Comprehensive High School um, from eight AM to four PM. Uh, Gloria, you are the only one who's required to take it as a new member, but like I said, I'm taking it again myself just because, hey, why not? So I just wanted to let everybody know about that. Yeah, it's, I can give you a ride short. Um, many assignments were set? Our next meeting is going to be February 12th, which is not our regular schedule. But with February vacation and the holiday and the information we're getting on February 2nd, the mayor, Mr. Soto and myself decided it was best not to wait till the end of February. So our next scheduled meeting will be February 12th. Uh, the parade this year is on actual St. Patrick's Day, because that is a Sunday. Um, so I'll need to hear from you guys soon of who plans to march. If you don't have a sash, um, and need one, let me know. Uh, and we'll go from there on that. Any other announcements? Ms. LaFave?
A clarification on, on what you mentioned, and now I, I just lost it. Oh my God, this is the worst. Um,
Anybody else, what Ms. LaFave thinks? Mr. Collmore?
Yeah, a discussion we brought up before about, uh, going back to two meetings a month.
We're going to discuss that at the retreat. Yeah, with the letter coming out on the second, it will really help us decide what path we need to take going forward. You know? If we're not getting out of receivership anytime soon, maybe we don't go to two meetings a month, I don't know. We'll see. Ms. LaFave, did you? Did it come back to you?
Maybe it might be. It might, I don't know. Um, uh, please let me know whoever is going to attend the March 9th, so I can get you guys registered. Um, for the charting the course.
You can register online too, if you need to.
Or you can go online to MASC.org and sign up for it. I really don't think that that's what I, what it was. Forget it. My brain has tried for tonight.
Following their Facebook page is really helpful. Um, MASC's Facebook page, they announce all their events on their Facebook page. And then we get little brochures in the mail from them all the time as well. And then, thank you, Ms. LaFave was able to help us get these. These are our MassGen law books that get updated annually. So if you're not an internet person, everything you should want to know or need to reference might be in there. And then I think I saw Ms. Wilson's hand.
I just emailed you, never mind.
All right, great. Any other announcements, comments, concerns? Seeing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, I already said it. My bad.
It hasn't been voted on yet. Yes, Ms. Williams, go ahead.
Quick, this is for the students in Holyoke. I have a poem of November 21st, 2021 at 7:00 AM. It says, going to the library. Going to the library will not be very hard. The item you will need is your library card. While traveling to the library, you do not want to speed. Want to arrive on time to find the books you need. Going to the library is also for me and you. It's not just for children, it's there for adults too. When you arrive at the library, there should be no fear. It's so quiet and so peaceful, you might want to stay in there. Some might think to themselves, why these books could be my friends? This peaceful feeling I get while here, I don't want it to end. In the library, may or may not see toys, but you cannot help but notice the quiet girls and boys. As the children in the library walk quietly down the aisles, you can see they have found the books they need by their great big beautiful smiles. So now when they are finished acting like little scouts, they walk up to the front desk to have their books checked out.
Hi. Thank you, Rosalie.
I'm amazed you can remember, you know, because it was like at 7:00 AM. I mean, I can't remember.
Oh, on the motion to adjourn, we had it moved by Ms. LaFave, I'll take a second. As, I heard that for Dr. Rivera Cologne. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all, have a good night, we'll see you on Sunday, the 4th.